To call this meeting to order, this is the City of Southfield Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission, January 26, 2022. Start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the people of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a roll call, please, Jeff?
Yes, Mr. Culpepper.
Present.
Mr. Huntington. Mr. Martin. Dr. Stevens-Gun. Mr. Willis is excused and Ms. Mia is excused. So, Mr. Chairman, you have a court to conduct business this evening.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
To the Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to approve the agenda for January 26, 2022 with one minor adjustment. For the approval of the minutes, I'd like to change the dates to December 8th and December 15th.
Okay.
Item F.
Can I have a second?
I support with the addition of the change in the minutes to December 8th.
Okay, got a favorable motion to approve the agenda with minor modification by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Culpepper, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye, aye, aye.
None? All right, motion's approved. Let the minutes show, Commissioner Huntington is now present. Do we have any announcements or communications today?
Yeah, just one this evening. If you recall, we had spoken a few weeks back with regard to this being a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Historic Designation Advisory Board. Due to a notice issue, we had to reschedule this meeting, so we will be having a joint meeting with the Historic District Advisory Board on February 9th. That would be your next study meeting. So as we've done in the past, the Historic Designation Advisory Board would be first, then we would then bring the Planning Commission in later on for our study meeting items. But for anyone who might be in the audience this evening, again, the Historic Designation Advisory Board meeting was canceled for tonight and will be moved to February 9th. So that's all that I have for this evening.
Okay. Under the public hearings, the first item is PZR 21-0006.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this, and I'm going to go through the rezoning first. There is actually three separate cases for this particular proposal. We have a rezoning request, a special land use, and a site plan, but we'll go through the rezoning first. So the petitioner is Design House, the property located at 28681 Northwestern Highway and is .51 acres of land. Civil parcel 2418-276054. It's on the southeast corner of Northwestern Highway and Franklin Road. The existing zoning on this property is B1, neighborhood business, and the proposal is to go to B3, general business. This is the property in question, as I noted, on the southeast corner of Northwestern Highway in Franklin. Existing zoning, as I noted, is B1, and the proposal is B3. I will note that directly to the north is B3 general business, as well as directly to the west across Franklin Road is also B3 general business. And actually, from this point going north, almost a mile and a half, all the way up to Inkster Road is all B3 general business along the Northwestern Highway frontage. Future land use map shows this particular area's regional mixed use. And then with that, I do know the petitioner is here this evening, so a petitioner, if you can just discuss the rezoning portion at this time before we go into a public hearing, we'll give you that opportunity now.
And please just state your name and address for the record when you start.
Good evening. Mike Fazola, Design House Architecture, 3300 Auburn Road, Auburn Hills, Michigan. For the rezoning, we're just looking to develop the, from the request from the petitioner, a convenience store with a small gas station within the B3 district with the rezoning nearby, so we just ask for, yeah, sorry. So, yeah, we just, simply with the rezoning, we just, the petitioner came to us and looking to develop a convenience store with a gas station, which is allowed within the B1 district, so with that, we're just looking to rezon from B1 to B3.
Thank you.
And again, the commissioner should consider all the potential uses in the B3, not this particular use?
Yeah, and if I may through the chair, you were sent a list of those uses along with the rezoning memo that I sent out earlier.
So we're going to handle these in order, public hearing for each, and then close?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are you finished?
We're pretty, we're also given a letter of demand use from corporate, which was included in the packet, that states that they feel that that area is a good location for a gas station, and we've also done several studies of similar.
Bill, we're going to, that'll be the next, the next case. We're just dealing with, again, the justification for rezoning from 1 to B3, and you have to consider all the potential uses in the district.
Okay. This is a public hearing, like to open up the public hearing at this time. If there's any members from the public here who wish to speak, please approach the front and state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Rita Soka and my address is 3735 Lockburn Drive, Commerce, Michigan 48382. I am here in opposition of this rezoning, and I had submitted a petition to Mr. Spence, and I would like to have that read into the record, but in the meantime, I am here to answer any questions or make any comments outside of that letter. But I would like to highlight that as a petitioner recognizes that this is a B1 zoning parcel, which is not, which is not within the regulations to make, put a gas station in the area. And to change the zoning from B1 to B3, it's, we're going to go outside of the regulations and we're going to go outside of the guidelines that the master plan had put in place, and the will of the people ultimately will be, will be going against the will of the people. Secondly, we do have a gas station across the street about approximately 200 feet away from the parcel subject to this hearing, and by placing another gas station in this corner, we will be going back to the, putting these gasoline stations in every corner, which we're moving away from having these types of businesses in every corner of every intersection because of their potential hazard to the environment. As I stated in my letter, the big three companies, when they met with President Biden earlier this year, or I believe last year, at the end of last year, they were projecting to have electric vehicles and move away from gasoline emission vehicles by 2030 to have 40 to 50% of their vehicles to be electric. So by having this gas station, we're going to add to the detriment to the environment. We're going to have more leakage of gasoline into the environment, and I have attached some studies showing that having gas stations in already sensitive areas such as this location is going to be detrimental to the environment, and also the emission that the gasoline gives to the air is detrimental, and now we have a lot of, and the orange area, I believe, is where we have the apartment buildings, and most of us are working remotely now, so being home, we're going to be exposed more and more to these emissions of the gasoline stations. And lastly, I would like to emphasize that we can't just, you know, give variances, they're already given to other locations, so we can't just give variances as people wish and go outside of the guidelines of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So she mentioned a letter, hope they read it into the record.
Yeah, we will read it into the record at the appropriate time.
Okay. Any other public wish to make a comment?
Excuse me, you're the applicant? Well, after the public hearing's closed, you'll have an opportunity to respond.
All right, seeing no further public in attendance, the public hearing is closed.
And before we get into discussion, again, I just want to remind the commission that you're considering the rezoning only at this point. I will point out that the future land use plan does propose for regional mixed use, so the B3 is consistent with at least the future land use plan. The specific concerns, legitimate concerns that were raised by the public really should be discussed under the special land use portion of tonight's agenda, but we wanted to give her an opportunity to speak, she can speak again under the special land use portion. And Mr. Spence, if you want to try to read into the record, and if you need me, I can help to do that as well.
To the Chair, this is Gerald.
Yes.
I have a question. By rezoning this to B3, that becomes a permanent designation, so in the future, if they decide to do something, if another petitioner comes and wants to do something, they would, this particular parcel would be zone B3, correct?
That's correct, and that's why I want the commission to focus on all the potential uses. For whatever reason, if the rezoning is granted and this petitioner does not go through with the proposed project, any of the allowed of all uses in B3 could be considered in the future. And then, under the next public hearing, we'll talk specifically about the proposed gas station as a special land use. And the other clarification I wanted to make is that this is not a waiver, this is actually a rezoning process that we're going through, so we're not waiving and allowing a gas station to be permitted in a B1 district. We are actually just focusing on the merits of rezoning to B3.
To the Chair, I have another question.
As I was going to say, Jeff, would it, I think it'd be beneficial for all of us if you remind us of the other uses that are allowed to B3, just, was that where you're going with that question, or?
I don't, is there 50 of them, or is there?
Yeah, if I may, and for the sake of clarity, I'm going to remove my mask just for a moment. So there are a large number of uses that are both permitted and special land uses within the district. For permitted uses, we're looking at medical office, like in clinics and in medical laboratories, banks, post offices, private clubs and nursery schools, photographic studios and interior decorating, photographic reproduction, blueprinting, funeral homes, personal services, which includes nail salons, barber shops, retail stores, veterinary clinics, publicly owned buildings, public utility buildings, establishments for electricians, plumbers, heating contractors, assembly halls and concert halls and religious institutions, open air retail sales, hotels, freestanding restaurants and carryout without drive-through, accessory buildings or anything customarily incidental to the above, what I've already noted, and health and fitness clubs. Those are permitted uses within the district. From a special use standpoint, we're looking at recreation centers, motor vehicle washing, gasoline stations, auto repair and service, automobile and truck agency rental, drive-in and fast food with drive-through, open air retail sales for motorhomes, camping trailers, et cetera, retail sales of handcrafted items, executive, administrative, and professional office, motels, theaters, alternative financial services, pawn shops, smoking lounges, shelters for homeless, soup kitchens, sexually oriented businesses, cabaret, medical marijuana provisioning centers, although with that one, I will tell you that this particular site is within 500 feet of a residential zone, so that would not be allowed, small box retail, kennels, and pet daycares. So those are all the types of uses that can go onto this property, should it be rezoned or any B3 zoning as it stands right now, both permitted and special land uses.
Thank you, Jeff. Chris Stevens-Gun.
I have another question regarding the rezoning. If I heard you correctly, you said on Northwestern Highway, between this location and Inkster Road is all, it is all B1, correct?
It's all B3.
It's all B3. Then my question is, was this, is this particular rezoning as a result of this petition, or is this something that we were going to do anyway?
Well, this is a result of the petitioner requesting, but I do want to point out again, Franklin Road was a parcel that the city acquired for right-of-way, and the zoning ordinance says that the zoning extends to the middle point of the right-of-way. So in theory, this proposed rezoning of B3 would be contiguous to the B3 that goes northwest in the graphic. So the graphic that's showing, that shows the purple in between the proposed B3 and existing would go away in essence, it's really, would be contiguous to. So it's only this particular parcel that we're considering B3. The future land use plan does support regional mixed use, which the B3 falls into. So just on the merits of the zoning itself, it's consistent with the future land use plan. Now, the list of uses that Mr. Spence read into the record, the first half were permitted by right, the second half are special land uses, and some of them have additional qualifications, such as the medical marijuana would not be permitted because it's within 500 feet of a residential district. Some of the other special land uses also have distancing requirements, so, but again, if we're just looking at the merits of the rezoning, it is consistent with the future land use plan, and it would be contiguous to other B3. Those are the fundamental issues, and then there's, in Mr. Spence's letter, there's other things that we would consider, but again, on the merits of the rezoning, it is consistent with the future land use plan.
Yeah, and if I may through the chair, just from the standpoint of history, the gas station across the street was noted, that particular area was also rezoned to B3 some time ago, and that particular gas station had to go through the same process that this one is going through for special land use, and did receive, obviously because it's there, did receive special use approval. So from a history standpoint, again, this property is directly across the street, but it basically is the same process that the gas station across the street went through that this particular petitioner is going through.
Commissioners, specifically regarding rezoning, any other questions?
I think the rezoning makes sense because it is compatible with other permitted uses, and the fact that there is a gas station on this side of the street, but it's not any gas station on that side of the street. And I know, I'm driving looking for a gas station, I want to go to one that's going direction I'm headed to, instead of trying to make a U-turn onto a busy street. And it's also a convenience store, so the neighborhood could take advantage of the convenience store, they want kids going to ride bikes up there, get some candy, whatever, but the convenience store would also come in handy, I think, for the neighborhood. But, you know, I think it is compatible with what's going on over there right now. Thank you.
And if I may through the chair, I know that, I believe I was asked to read this letter into the record, is that something you want me to do right now?
Or is it more appropriate for the special use, or how do we?
No, it should be now. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
If it's dealing with all of the uses, it's probably, probably good to read it now. I think it's more particular to the special land use, but we can read it into the record now and get it, get it in front of everybody.
Okay, I'll do that.
That'd be good.
If you need me to take over, let me know.
Yes. So again, this is to the Southfield Planning Commission from Rita Soka, email retasoka@gmail.com, dated 1/26/2022. Petition in opposition of the construction of a gasoline filling station with convenience store at 28681 Northwestern Highway. This is a petition on behalf of the owners of Franklin Liquor Incorporated, located at 28500 Franklin Road, and Marathon Gasoline Station located at 28745 Northwestern Highway, opposing the rezoning of the property located at 28681 Northwestern Highway. The new construction of a gasoline station with a convenience store at 28681 Northwestern Highway will be of great concern to the surrounding community. New gasoline station will violate the city code, it will affect the health, safety, property value, quality life of the surrounding community, and will cause traffic congestion. The goal of zoning ordinances is to provide businesses and residential property development a guidance. Its purpose is to comply with the will of the master plan. Ordinances do not exist to allow for rezoning of variances. City of Southfield should strictly enforce the zoning ordinances in zoning districts. If the city deviates from its regulations, it will cause a slippery slope. This will open the door to other businesses to request a rezoning to develop other businesses as they wish. When the master plan was formulated, the zoning districts were created to implement the will of the people. Thus, the City of Southfield cannot create rules and regulations with an eye to create variance to any, to everyone who wishes to make such changes. Property located at 28681 Northwestern Highway only qualifies for the neighborhood business district B1, does not qualify for the general business district B3, which is a required zoning to operate as a gasoline station. Owner of this property, owner Finitech LLC, can and should come up with a business model that fits the existing zoning, instead of trying to deviate from the pre-existing rules created by the will of the people. Business model does not have, have to be a gasoline station with a convenience store. As a business owner, owner Finitech LLC is well aware of the rules, and they are not there for variances to be granted as they wish. Owner Finitech LLC must adhere to the pre-existing regulations and be a stop from constructing this gasoline station. Violates the intent of the general business ordinance. The general standards under, required under Article 8, Section 5.169 will be violated if this proposal is approved. Specifically, Section 1C of the ordinance states that "The proposed use, gasoline filling station, must be in accord with the spirit and purpose of this chapter and not be inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives sought to be accomplished by this chapter and the principles of sound planning." Purpose and intent of this chan, the purpose and intent of this chapter, the general business B3 district, is very clear as it is provided in Article 18, Section 5.1166 is. The general business district B3 is designed to provide sites with diversified business types and is often located as to serve passerby traffic. Proposal does not meet or even approach the intent of the ordinance, therefore, it violates one of the required standards stated under Section 5.169. The proposed gasoline filling station with a convenience store will not serve this ordinance explicit intent. There are several gasoline filling stations within one mile of this parcel. In fact, there is one within 200 feet of 28681 Northwestern Highway, located at 28745 Northwestern.
As for the convenience store, the adjacent property at 28500 Franklin Road is a pre-existing convenient liquor store dating back to the 1980s. The pre-existing gasoline station and the liquor store combined have been sufficiently serving the community within the vicinity. There is no need for another gasoline filling station or convenience store in that immediate area. Further, variances have already been given to the other service stations that are within the immediate vicinity. The owner of the property located at 28681 Northwestern Highway is not one of them and is not entitled to one as dictated by the law. Health and safety. The current code dictates that gasoline stations are not to adversely affect the health and safety of the community. Article 18, Section 5.169-1, subsection F, the proposed use or change in use, the proposed gas station in perens, will not be adverse to the promotion of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Additionally, the code provides that the proposed use is such a character and intensity and arranged on the site, so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, or fumes. Gasoline stations are certainly not of such character, they are quite the opposite. It is almost impossible to eliminate such adverse effect. In fact, the proposed gasoline station will add to the adverse effect to the community's health and welfare. Numerous studies have shown the dangers of having a gas station in such close proximity to homes and other heavily populated areas. A gasoline station in this location would therefore be a violation of city code as it poses a nuisance and health hazard to nearby residents. Proving harmful effects of living close to a gas station include, but are not limited to the following, significant increased risk of childhood leukemia, elevated air pollution, increased benzene emissions leading to cancer, anemia, increased susceptibility to infections, low birth weight. Notably, a 2015 study researched the effects of hydrocarbons released during the storage and fueling of gasoline. The study reports that although the portion of unburned fuel released into the environment is small, the cumulative effects are indeed a public health concern, particularly affected our residents nearby gas stations who spend significant amount of time at home as compared to those who leave the home for work because of the longer period of exposure. Given the current circumstances with the pandemic, more people are working from home, hence will be a greater exposure to gasoline harmful effects. There are several apartment buildings within a walking distance to this parcel that would adversely be affected by this proposal. The proposed gasoline filling station and convenience store will be, will place a gasoline tank vent within 500 feet of residential homes, 200 feet of other businesses such as Franklin Liquor. Normal gasoline station spills are estimated at more than 1,500 liters every decade. These emissions and spills will make their way into neighboring residential properties and homes and will have health impacts on the residents in place already. The current administration is actively pushing for a strategy aimed at rapidly shifting American from gasoline-powered cars and trucks towards electric vehicles. A central part of President Biden's plan is to reduce the pollution that is heating the planet. Approving this construction will take American backward and will add to the problem that we're trying to eliminate as a society. Recently, the President Recently, the president met with the chief executives of nation's three largest automotors, automakers, Michigan's big three, pledging to make forty to fifty percent of their new car sales electric vehicles by twenty thirty. Further, as a society, we are moving away from a service activity of a service station on every corner as they used to be, and now this proposal is suggesting returning to the plan of a gasoline station at every corner. This move is supported by the administration's conserve about the environmental pollution. This is especially true when there's another gasoline station directly across the street. This proposal is adding to the already environmentally sensitive area due to the pre-existing gas stations in the same area. Traffic congestion. Current municipal code dictates that gas stations are not to cause traffic hazard or congestion. Article eighteen, section five point one six nine, subsection one D, provides that the proposed use is of such character and the vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or the adjacent thoroughfares. The proposed location of the gas station would cause traffic hazards as existing roads do not provide for a smooth flow of traffic with addition of tankers and other vehicles entering the gas station. Traffic would be significantly impacted, impacted as residents of our community and the surrounding communities tried to use Northwestern Highway and Franklin Road to reach their homes, six ninety-six freeway and other businesses. Additionally, the fuel trucks would impede and block traffic continuing south on the Northwestern Highway or northwest on Franklin Road as the fuel trucks would not be able to smoothly enter this awkwardly positioned parcel sitting in a corner that directs traffic coming from the east side of Franklin Road to the Northwestern Highway. The added traffic congestion puts this project in clear violation of another point of our city's municipal code. That's the end of the letter.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other comments?
To the chair?
Yes.
I, uh, looking at, as Jeff has read off, all of the zoning districts, there are twenty uses that's permissible in that area, and there are twelve that must get approval. This fits into the master plan. On the other hand, I'm not in favor of something else, but this, this rezoning fits into the master plan to open up that area for various things. This does not mean that the gas station will be there if approved or not, but there are, again, twenty proved other places that can, buildings can be there. So I personally think this area deserves to be rezoned because, again, looking at what you have on there, we have B three zoning there. Now, whether it's a gas station, a church, a synagogue, or whatever, there, there are certain things that the zoning will replace. So I'm in favor of rezoning based on the comprehensive master plan, and it does fit in with the zoning that's already been redone for the gas station across the street. So I'm in favor of the rezoning. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Anton?
Yes, I think because of the size of the land and the shape of the land, not many B three businesses can really fit over there. And they would not, most of them would not have enough room for parking that would be required. So because of the size of the land, I really think it's really limited to what could go there as far as B three. So I don't think that should be a big concern, and again, I think this is compatible with what's going on there.
Any final comments, questions?
Given what I've learned about the, the zoning and that it becomes a part, it, it is part of the property, the actual parcel, I'm in support of that.
I can't disagree. It's, it's not against the master plan. It's adjacent to other B three. It's Northwestern Highway. It's, uh, it's where all the, it's where all the action is, I guess, in the zoning district. So from a zoning point of view, I don't have any opposition. We have the planner's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to P Z R twenty-one dash zero 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 six, the rezoning request of Design House to rezone point five one acres of land from B one neighborhood business to B three general business property located two eight six eight one Northwestern Highway. The planning department does make a favorable recommendation of P Z R twenty-one dash zero 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 six for the following reasons. Excuse me. The Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan indicates regional mixed use for this property. Change in zoning would be compatible with and similar to existing adjacent zonings and land uses. Proposal is in accordance with the standards for rezoning of property and per article, per section five point one two of Article three, the boundaries of zoning districts include to the center lines of streets and alleys. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Yes.
I move favorable recommendation for P Z R two one dash zero 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 six.
Second. Got a favorable motion by Commissioner Culpepper, second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. The rezoning is approved. The next public hearing item is the special use request, P S L U twenty-one dash zero zero one one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be doing both the special land use and the site plan at the same time, just for the sake of time. But this is P S L U twenty-one dash zero zero one one and P S P twenty-one dash zero zero one two, same petitioner, Design House, for two eight six eight one Northwestern Highway. For the special land use portion, P S L U twenty-one dash zero zero one one, the request is to allow the construction of a two thousand four hundred and seventy-four gross square foot gasoline filling station with convenience store. So this is the, the plan for the particular site. Currently existing, the, the existing building is along Northwestern Highway. This particular building would be set back quite a distance from Northwestern and then a distance from Franklin Road as well with the, the pumps with the canopy closer to Northwestern. Elevations of the building, so these are all four sides. Colored site plan showing landscaping. So there's going to be a significant upgrade to landscaping on the property as well should this proposal be approved. They do meet all the requirements of the fifteen-foot requirement on all sides adjacent to the roadways. This is the floor plan. And I will tell you that the, the petitioner actually reduced the size of the footprint of the building so that he could avoid any kind of waivers for setbacks. This is a perspective, and you will note that there's an art item that is also shown on the pavement. So this is a, a kind of mural that is being proposed on the pavement itself for their, to meet their art requirement. There was a mention with regard to gas stations within one mile. So this particular graphic shows that there are four gas stations within one mile of this particular site. You'll see three are relatively close, and then there is one at the corner of twelve Mile and Telegraph Road. Within three miles, there's a good deal more. I believe it's almost twenty-four particular gas stations within a three-mile radius of this proposed site.
And if, I'd like to make a few additional comments. I have raised concerns about the amount of gas stations within the city. I've also raised concerns about the proposed location and the amount of gas stations within the immediate vicinity. I too have concerns about the long-term, longevity of new gas stations considering that the East American auto market is moving towards all electrical vehicles. And I don't know what the gas station industry, whether it's an existing gas station or a proposed new one, what their long-term plans. I hate to have a gas station open up and have to close within five to ten years because the, the need is, is less. I don't know if there's a plan to transition from diesel fossil fuels to electric charging stations, if that even makes sense. So I'd like the petitioner to be able to address that. I also am concerned about long-term environmental mitigation. Again, if, if, if the country wasn't moving towards this, this whole electrical vehicle fleet, you know, maybe, maybe some of these questions wouldn't be as relevant, but I do think we have to look at the long-term and the near-long-term future. If, if half of all vehicles are going to be electric by twenty thirty, again, are we, are we supporting horse and carriage when, when the automobile came? You know, industries that failed to adapt and to see the future end up not making it. So I think these are legitimate, legitimate questions for you guys to consider in twenty twenty-two with the special land use request. I, I think the rezoning was appropriate because it did, was supported by the future land use plan, but I think we got to start looking hard at gas stations, their location, their long, long-term legit longevity, and whether or not are we creating a problem that we're going to be dealing with down the road. Granted, the landscaping is, is significant. Granted, it's, it's new development on a vacant parcel. Granted that, you know, the graphics and, and the art installation are certainly improvements to some of the older exist, existing gas stations, but I think we got to look long-term hard before you guys decide how you want to move forward on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say anything further? Do we do this first or public hearing first? Sorry. Yeah, I think they-
They're able to make a brief presentation, then we'll open the public hearing, and then you can pull them back up to answer questions.
So, yeah, come up now-
Make a brief presentation if you want on the merits of the special-
Specifically to the gas station and why do we need another gas station, those type of questions, and please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Adam Tier, twenty-five ninety-four Hunters Bluff, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. I'm the owner of Finnetech, and I'd be more than happy to answer. Actually, I could bring some expert to deal with the environmental issues. Gas stations now, they're not built like fifty years ago. They're well-contained, well, you know, like-
Close it to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Louder.
Can you hear me or no?
That's better.
Okay. No, the gas station is not built the same way like fifty years ago, forty years ago. They're very safe right now, environment-wise, environmental-wise, and you could see gas station are getting built by Kroger, by Speedway, they're still building them, and they cannot see electric cars being on the road, thirty or forty percent of them are going to be on the road ten years or fifteen years from now. They didn't see it that way. That, that's why they're still building. And for me to invest that kind of money in this gas station and leave in ten years or fifteen years, it doesn't make any sense unless we see, we have a vision, and I'm still building, I see the vision twenty, thirty years from now. I didn't see it five or ten years or fifteen years from now. And as I said, I'll bring somebody who, who like Oscar W. Larson, the company that we deal with, they're, they're biggest in Michigan, and they build gas stations all over the, how many states in the, I mean, different states, and they could talk about the safety of this gas station and how it affects the environment, how, nothing really comes out of there, it's very clean, and you know what, and for the traffic, actually, it eases the traffic for gas, for cars coming from Franklin, turning on Northwestern, it's easier for them to go in there, get the gas, and get in Northwestern or, you know, or keep going straight on Franklin. The other thing for the gasoline truck, the tank's about twenty thousand gallon tank and probably comes twice a week, and usually they come at night. So there is no, no way this truck would be doing anything in there affecting the traffic in there or not, and it's very safe. I mean, you could look at what the, I mean, the city of Michigan, how they control the, how we do our tanks, how the gas get dropped, it's very safe. And as I said, they will bring, I could bring somebody who, an expert who could, you know, talk about this and educate or help people know about it, you know? And thank you.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about the electric vehicle? I, I believe you're proposing a charging station here.
I'm sorry?
Are you proposing an electric vehicle charging station on your site?
We could add that, we could add down there, and usually they recommend it in the highways, but early they don't see, like, talking to the gas station, the gas people, I go to seminars all over the country, and they don't see it like thirty, like it's going to be thirty percent in ten years or twenty percent or, they don't see, they're still building. If you look at, I mean, Kroger, they're just, they're building stations left or right, like, still, and so is other Speedways, Seven-Eleven. These are big companies, they see, they do their studies, they just don't build a station and think there's not going to be any business in there. And for me to invest this kind of money in it, it, it doesn't make any sense. And we're building another station right now because that's how I see it, you know, my vision and the people I work with.
Yeah, could, could you point out how, where the gas is unloaded on the site plan? Or tell us where it is?
I have to bring somebody like, I'm sorry, I could, let me-
I mean, are they blocking Northwestern Highway or they, they're out of your sight, I assume?
It's going to be, it's going to be driving, I'm guessing right now, near the, the fills will be like a long, maybe, either Northwestern or Franklin, one of them, but it's not going to be blocking anything, no, it won't be, no. It's, it's illegal, you cannot do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely not.
Jeff, you had a clarification?
Yeah, just from the standpoint of, of special use requirements, can you give us your hours of operation that, that you're hoping for?
Really, you know, I don't know. I mean, if the city says something, we'll follow it, but normally we run stations from, some close at midnight, some are open twenty-four hours, and some close at ten, but not because of the city requires it, but we do it based on business, what, what kind of business we have, you know, some station fifty-fifty basically what we have, twenty-four hours and seven days, you know?
We're, we're asking you what you are proposing-
Oh, for here?
And then they can make a decision if they, counsel can decide if they want to trim that back.
I'm guessing by midnight, close at midnight, probably, I'm guessing. And if the city has like a kind of a recommendation, like what they want us to do, like they close earlier, we will be closing early, but right now, I'm guessing from, we usually open about five to midnight.
Five AM to midnight?
Five AM.
Seven days a week?
Usually Sundays close about ten.
Okay, so again, that's what we want. Monday through Saturday, five AM to midnight, Sunday, five AM to ten PM?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens is going first, please.
Good evening. Couple weeks ago, when you were here, I requested a feasibility study to understand how this particular business is going to benefit our community, given the number of gas stations that are in the general area as well as in the city. And I, I did not see that information shared this evening. So I, I'd like to have empirical evidence that supports the need for this particular business at that particular location.
You know, I didn't have anything written, but I could tell you, like, people driving on, on Franklin Road trying to get to Northwestern, they would rather go in that station and go on Northwestern and make a Michigan left and go into the other station and then turn around and going back out again, you know?
I appreciate your anecdotal information. However, I would like to see empirical evidence that supports the need for that particular business at that location and the benefits that it will bring to our community.
So what, why don't I suggest this? Why don't we hold the public hearing, then bring it back to the, the commission for further questions? And we certainly can postpone a decision tonight. If you want a traffic study or if you want some additional information, we can request the applicant bring that back before you make a final decision. But we do have a public hearing scheduled. I do want to give the public an opportunity to speak, and then we can bring it back for further questions and comments.
Okay. I think that's a great suggestion. We'll circle back around. Thank you. Well-
Okay.
You brought up the hours, and I have a question about the hours.
You got an hour?
Last week, at the last meeting, you said twenty-four hours a day. In this meeting, you're talking about different hours. So is it twenty-four hours a day or the hours you just stated?
Sir, you know, like, early we base, like, how we base the station, in my experience, we base the station based on business. If there is business in-
we base the station based on business. If there is business in, like, after mid, like, throughout the night, we keep it open. If there's no business, we close earlier. And when he asked me the question, we want to be concerned about what the community wants. Like, if there's, like, if it's going to affect, like, close to us, people, whether it's going to be like, it's going to be inconvenient, for example, for the community, we close earlier. If it's not, we would, obviously, normally, we will, if there's a business, we'll, we'll open 24 hours. We're open to, we're open for 24 hours, seven days a week. We're open, we do that, as I said. But if it's required, we are required, or like, we are making it convenient or making it, you know, for the community, we, we will close earlier.
So we're just saying, if you get approved for less hours, you got to come back and get re-approved to open 24 hours, so.
Again, if I could, let's, let's hold the public hearing, then we can bring this back.
Okay.
He made a, he made an update to the hours of operation. You can make a recommendation that that's what we, what we recommend if you are so inclined, or inclined. And then the council will have the final say. But in this particular case, I do want to give the public an opportunity to speak, and then, then we can talk all, as long as you want about these other issues.
Okay.
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
If you want, next meeting, I will bring somebody who's expert in environmental and, like, how the station is built and all that. And you could raise all the questions you want about the tanks, about the gasoline, about all that. If there is any release, if there's anything, I'll be more than happy to bring somebody here with me, and you could have all your questions answered or concerns answered because, for.
Again, again, let's, let's hold the public hearing. I'm going to make a recommendation that we postpone this to get this other information. But I want to hold the public hearing now.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing. Like, open up the public hearing at this time. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address again for the record, and you were right on three minutes the first time perfectly.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rita Soka, and my address, 3735 Lockman Drive, Commerce Township, 4832. I appreciate you tonight again. I would like to comment on three points that were just discussed. Doctor, I would like to emphasize on your point that they needed to bring in evidence that this gas station is going to bring benefit and it's not, and it's needed for this community. And I would like to highlight that it is not needed because to the left of it, and I would like to, to point to your attention that, to the left of it, if you're driving northwest on Franklin Road, instead of making a right to this gas station, you can make a left into the other gas station, literally about 200 feet. So there is a gas station. If you can't make, you don't need to make that U-turn. You can just turn left into the other gas station. If you're driving on Northwestern Highway, which is my path every day almost, there are about 30 of them from Orchard Lake, not 30, maybe 10. I exaggerated. Sorry about that. So, so there is no need. The second point that I would like to make is, I don't think there is a safe way to build a gas station and emit emissions. Because if there was, our administration would not be trying to eliminate gasoline cars and move to electric. If there was, we would think that the big three would have come up with a way to do so, right? So I don't think an expert can come and opine on a way of making it safe or finding a way. Otherwise, everyone in America would have found such a way of making it safe. And my third point is regarding the traffic. So I see, I think, I believe there is one entrance currently to that property, but now we're going to have three entrances. So Franklin Road, we're going to have some congestion going northwest, and it's already a busy road. Then you have Northwestern Highway. It is busy almost all the time. So now, we're going to have these cars and the tankers going in and out of this congested area right before you hop on the highway. It is, it's going to pose a hazard and get an, an accident environment. It's just like, it's going to create a perfect scenario and a perfect area for just accidents to happen in that immediate area because there's so much going on. And that corner, when you make a right, it's, it's, it's like a blind spot. Cars are coming fast, you're making a right, and then you're going to add those traffic coming in and out of that gas station. I don't think it's a possible, you know, it's a possibility to have a gas station. I understand you approved the rezoning to B3, but there is other business models that could be put in there, but not a gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public, the public hearing is now closed. And open it back up to the commission for comments and questions. Christopher Huntington?
I had a question for the petitioner. So how often do the tankers come in to fill the tanks?
The tanker is about like twice a week because it's a good-sized tank we have in there. So, and usually they come at night because it depends on the traffic. If there's too much traffic, they would, they don't want to be there during the day. And how they come in, you know, it's going to be, is that going to be like, going to be on Northwestern when it's busy or Franklin when it's busy? It's going to be evening, nighttime. And that's how we, they come in. Probably, I'm guessing twice a week max, twice a week, like, you know, nighttime.
So towards the end of the day, about twice a week, you're saying?
Twice a week will be. My guess is going to be, it depends on the volume of the, the station. I cannot, you know, I don't know, but my guess is going to be max of twice a week.
Okay. And one more question, as far as the convenience store, will it have a kitchen in there?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to have food at all served in the?
It might. It might, based on the design. You know, we usually, we usually do some kind of food in there.
So you will have a little small kitchen area, you're saying?
Was there?
Well, if I could.
No, probably, I'm guessing not because we don't have an, oh my, I'm loud here. It's, I didn't know the, the store is big enough to make food, fresh food. But most likely it's going to be sa, like sandwiches grab and go, you know what I'm saying?
I believe if Mr. Spence can correct me, by right, they can sell prepackaged food. If they do any kitchen or service, that requires a special land use in itself.
Right.
And they have not applied for that. So.
Yeah.
All, all that's permitted right now is prepackaged goods and services.
Okay. Yep. That's what I need to know. All right. Thank you.
Christopher Stevens is going?
Yes. This question is directed to Jeff and Terry. As I was reviewing the information on page three, capacity of infrastructure, the, I didn't understand. Can you explain how the answer, how, how that answers the question? I didn't understand it. Number five.
What page are you referring to?
Number five on the document that Jeff sent, PZR 21-0006, rezoning point, 51 acres of land to B3, and it's on page three, item number five, capacity of infrastructure.
Yeah, if I may through the chair. So the reference is made to the memo with regard to the rezoning.
Okay.
Standards. So under number five, it says capacity of infrastructure. Is the capacity, is the capacity of infrastructure and municipal services, including public schools, adequate to accommodate the uses in the requested zoning district without compromising the health, safety, and welfare? And basically, the response, yes, this is a very dense area of, of development, basically is noting it from the standpoint of infrastructure, whether it's underground, whether it's water, sanitary sewer. Because this is a dense area, the, the availability and the capacity of those particular utilities are, are large enough to be able to service this additional use up and down Northwestern Highway.
Okay. Thank you.
Christopher Martin, Jeff, Jeff's.
My question.
Go ahead.
My question was more of a comment. If I understand correctly.
Mr. Martin, can you speak real closer?
I'm sorry.
I know it's difficult with these masks.
Yeah. If I understand correctly, you were mentioning, sorry, the young lady was mentioning that they would have difficulty because of the gas station, because of the trucks delivering gas coming in and out. If I understand correctly, what you're saying right now, your gas station has two entrances, exits onto Northwestern Highway, which is the same that they're proposing. And then again, they have an entrance and exit on Franklin Road, which your station doesn't. So how are they causing more of a prop, a traffic congestion problem with that, that they're not, you know, that they're, and they also have traffic light for traffic going on, on and off of Franklin Road and on and off of Northwestern Highway. Your station has the same traffic light, but you have a problem in that your southernmost driveway is close to the light, and traffic comes out of there and interferes with traffic that's on Northwestern when, you know, when the light changes. So I'm not understanding what you're seeing is a difficulty versus what they're seeing. So could you?
I explained it to you. Actually, the station is better off. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No. You know, I think, I think we're all reviewing the site plan here. I think we're, I think we all understand the, the site layout.
Yeah. And again, what, I, I really, the, the public made her, her comments, and it's really not a dialogue back and forth with the public unless you need a clarification. What I'm going to suggest, I want everyone to have their questions, is that we postpone this to no date certain, to give the applicant time to coordinate their environmental person to come in and address these issues, that a traffic study be submitted, that'll address the traffic issues, and that some additional supporting documents, what is the brand that?
Mobile.
Yeah. A mobile should be able to provide some additional resources to answer the questions on need. I think these are all legitimate issues. I did raise them the first time we discussed this. At this point, since we are getting down into traffic and truck deliveries and so forth, I think it is a valid request to ask for a traffic study. I think the environmental issues are, again, valid so that they have time. Now, if they're able to, to produce this stuff in enough time to bring them back at next month's meeting, we'll bring them back. But I would, I would strongly recommend at this point that the commission recommends tabling to no date certain, and then we'll pick up the special land use and the site plan when they're better prepared to answer these questions.
Okay. But we can get the rest of our concerns out here while they're.
Yes, yes, of course.
While they're doing research.
But I, I don't want to, you know, bogged down on stuff that they, they can't answer right now tonight.
Okay. So we're not redesigning site plans, just get the rest of the concerns out on the floor. I have, I have several. But go ahead.
Okay. Going to a more specific question. You mentioned a possibility of electric charging stations. One of the things that you might want to consider, or that we would be interested in, is in nine to 10 years, you're talking about going to electric vehicles. When do you see the phase-out of gasoline vehicles so that there is no need for a gas station versus 100% electric vehicles so that there's no need for the gas? Also.
From what, what we hear.
That's a big question.
Yeah.
Can I ask you?
I don't think you can answer.
These are things to consider.
Okay. No problem.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Christopher Culpepper?
To the petitioner, for future use when your next meeting, sustainability. You know, we, we know there are 24 gas stations surrounding that area. What my concern and what should be everybody's concern is, are you going to be sustainable? Love the project, love this area, but being, putting a gas station in that area, are you going to be able to sustain it? We know that electric vehicles are being pushed. To me, you're not being specific to say if you're going to have charging stations there, or will you be able to turn that gas station into electrical usage? Are you always going to be able to do gas? Now, I know, you know, we got cars, you're going to have to have cars. But in the future, I mean, we want, we want you to be sustainable. We don't want you there five years, 10 years. The city would like you there forever if it gets approved. But you got to have a game plan to be sustainable. And what we're hearing is that electrical vehicles is, is going to be the future. So you're investing all this money into this. Are you going to be able to be sustainable and be an asset to the community? Came up about what benefit are you going to bring to the residents? Well, you're going to bring a benefit to them if you're there and you providing a service. So is that service going to be beneficiary to the community and sustainable? So at this point in time, to the chair, I like to recommend postponing PSLU 21-001 to a date certain. And also, I'm not sure, Jeff, if we should do the site plan, postpone it to.
Well, if I may through the chair, I think we take them individually. But I just want to clarify or just make sure I heard you right. You said to a date certain. I believe the city planner had asked for no date certain. So if we do no date certain, we wait for the petitioner to bring all the information in, and then we would then reschedule them at a later date. Otherwise, we have to set a new date right now.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem. That I heard him say a date certain, or if you bought, if he bought the material in sooner. Correct me if I'm right. I have no problem.
If I could, I, I did recommend no date certain. I'm just saying that if they get their information in in a timely manner, we might be able to bring them back next month. But if you give us the direction of no date certain, that gives them some flexibility if they're not ready next month.
To the chair, I recommend we postpone PSLU 21-0011 to a date uncertain.
Good.
Support.
Okay. Any final comments before we head to the vote? I do have a few questions. It seems to me that gas in the city of Southfield is 20 or 30 cents more expensive than surrounding cities. That always bothers me. So I don't buy a lot of gas in the city of Southfield. I'm curious if that is a, a city tax, or if that is just, why is gas more expensive in Southfield than Farmington Hills or Oak Park or Detroit or whatever? Maybe I'm just perceiving that wrong. I'd be curious to have some evidence on that. Seems like there's a lot of concern that there's too many gas stations, but I don't think we have a rule about how many gas stations we can have in the city. So that's maybe some, we, we certainly are limiting a lot of other uses and through zoning, through the zoning ordinance. So that, that needs to be studied further. As far as the site plan, and the site plan has done well. They've, they've reduced the size of the building. They meet all the rules. They've eliminated many of the waivers. So seems to be our main concern is, why another gas station? How many is too many? You know, is that even necessary? Which I don't know is a, it's not a zoning question if there's not a limit on the amount of gas stations you're allowed in the city.
Well, if I could through the chair, though, if, if you look at the special land use requirements, that does give us the ability to look at, at these particular issues. Now, as you are aware, with small box retail or mid-sized box retail, with medical marijuana uses, with some of these other uses, we have put separation requirements to reduce the number. But council has been legitimately asking these questions about how much of each of these do we need? And again, since there is a national movement towards electric vehicles, I, I think in, in the broader context of the special land use regulations, and we'll, what we'll do is we'll drill down on those particular questions for the next time we, we come here. But I, I do think it is fair to ask, do we need another gas station in this community? And if we do, is this the right location for it? And then what is the long-term viability of such gas stations when they're, when automobile industry is phasing and going into another direction? So I think it is legitimate to ask the question.
And I hope we all do go to electric vehicles sooner than later, and I will believe it when I, when I see it. But there's definitely more of them out there than there used to be. I can't wait. It'll be interesting. Any other comments? I think it's going to be more than 10 years, but maybe I'll be wrong. All right. So we had a motion to postpone to no date certain by Commissioner Culpepper, second by Commissioner Martin. All in favor of postponing this is just PSLU 21-0011. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Postponed to no date certain. The last item is the site plan. Many of the same items already discussed. Be looking for a separate motion to postpone to no date certain on that.
To the chair?
Yes.
I move that we postpone PSP 21-0012 to a date uncertain.
Support. Okay. We got a motion to postpone to no date certain by Commissioner Culpepper. We got a motion to postpone to no date certain by Commissioner Culpepper, supported by Commissioner Huntington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Done.
To the chair?
Yes.
Will Planner Spence, Spence make sure that all the issues that we have concerns with are identified for the petitioner?
Yeah, via the minutes, or, or maybe a special memo from you, would you recap all of our many concerns?
Yeah, I, I have been taking notes, so I will definitely do that for you over the next few days.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item would be the approval of the minutes?
To the chair, I'd like to make a correction. When I spoke, I mentioned the first meeting was December 8th, not December 7th. Actually, the date was December 1st, not December 8th.
Okay. So the 1st and the 15th?
Correct.
Okay. So we looking for a motion on the minutes?
So a motion that we approve the minutes of December 1st, 2021, and December 15th, 2021, uh, the study meeting on the 1st and the regular meeting on the 15th.
Support.
Okay. Favorable motion by Commissioner Stevens-Gun, supported by Commissioner Culpepper for approval of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. We'll approve those with the corrected dates. Uh, this is the public comment portion of the meeting. Like to open up the public comment section at this time. Any members of the public here wish to come forward and make a comment? You have three minutes. Seeing none, uh, public comment section is now closed. Um, next item is the planning commission, to approve the planning commission meeting schedule, uh, moving forward through January of 2023.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so the, the schedule has been presented to you a couple of times for the remainder of 2022 into January of 2023. Uh, so this does take into account various holidays, uh, as well as the planners conference that generally happens in October. So the, the schedule that's before you this evening, uh, includes all of your meetings being in this particular room. Uh, if you recall, um, we used to be in the study room, which is directly adjacent for our study meetings. However, that particular room is no longer available. So all of our meetings will be, uh, in the council chambers. And I do need a recommendation and a motion, uh, and a second and a vote for, uh, accepting and approving this meeting schedule for February 2022 through January 2023.
To the chair?
Commissioner Martin?
There was a mention of, uh, 3 o'clock meeting for the, uh, huh, long-range plan for the finance that, is that, can that be scheduled, or is that we just leave it open and wait till everything's available and?
Yeah, if I may through the chair, uh, if you look at February 16th, it is a long-range study meeting, but also notes the CIP, uh, which is the capital improvement program. Uh, that is the meeting in which you were just talking about with regard to a 3 o'clock, uh, 3 o'clock start. So that is already on your calendar.
All right. Thank you very much.
So still looking for a motion to?
Motion to approve the calendar as prevented, presented for February 2022 through February 2020, through January 2023.
Support.
We've got a favorable motion as for the planning commission's schedule by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Huntington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. The next item is the approval of the planning commission annual report for 2021.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, uh, your annual report is, is regularly brought to you, uh, early in the next year. Uh, so January obviously makes sense to go over your annual report for 2021. This is required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act in the bylaws, that the commission shall make an annual written report to the legislative body, that being the council, concerning its operations and status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the legislative body related to planning and development. Uh, if you recall, uh, the planning department did ask you for comments with regard to moving forward, what you'd like to see in 2022, uh, as we move forward from the standpoint of planning initiatives. The report also has, um, reports on the number of meetings that not only you have had, but the other boards, uh, that the planning department, uh, helps to facilitate. Um, from an organization standpoint, uh, at least this is current as of today, uh, this is the planning commission, uh, as well as the planning team. Uh, in 2021, you had 29 planning meetings, uh, 17 of those were study, 11 regular, and one long-range study. Uh, also 10 city center advisory board meetings, 10 public art commission meetings, and seven board, uh, zoning board of appeals meetings. These are the, the review items, um, that took place by the planning commission throughout 2021. They included capital improvement, um, conditions of approval for PowerPoint presentations, art initiatives, master plan research, Open Meetings Act discussions, residential lighting, uh, transportation studies on bus stops. Uh, also included some zoning ordinance, ordinance amendments with the woodland-wetland protections, small box retail and small cell facilities, medical marijuana facilities and overlay districts, uh, non-conforming use definitions, and then standards for building materials, indoor recreation centers, automobile truck centers, dog kennels, um, data centers and light industrial, and so on. Planning commission initiatives for 2022, uh, as we noted earlier, capital improvement plan update, uh, which will be coming to you in February, uh, the front lawn redevelopment, John Grace R U D D. Uh, we did receive, uh, at least an application so far for the R U D D for John Grace over on Indian Street in the southwest corner of the city. That will be coming to you in February for a review item. So that's for residential unit development district for, for John Grace. Uh, LTU summer camp.
I'm going to jump in here for, for this one, Jeff. So, um, I just wanted you to be aware that, um, we're going to be hosting a three-day summer camp for the introduction of landscape architecture to high school students, sophomores through seniors. Um, this is part of, um, a committee that I'm serving on, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, uh, of the Michigan Chapter of American Society of Landscape Architects. We're trying to introduce landscape architecture as a career to more students of color, to get them, um, aware of, of us as a profession, and we're also providing scholarship funds to University of Michigan and MSU. And there may be a role that I might be asked in the planning commissioners to assist with, but we will be doing a walking tour of the city center trail, our arts. We will be doing some design charades. Um, there will be a mobile bus tour to downtown Detroit to, to visit some of the significant public parks and urban spaces. Uh, so we're, we're the ones that are facilitating and, and heading that up, and we want you to be aware and involved, involved if, if you're able to. Uh, we have three, two, four, six, we have six three-hour sessions over the course of three days. And, uh, even if it's just helping to get the word out, it's a nominal cost, and we do offer even scholarships for students who need, um, to be able to attend. And this is part and parcel to a summer-long series of day camps that LTU already sponsors and various STEM programs. So we're very proud and privileged to be able to be, take, take advantage of their resources in our backyard. Thank you.
Okay. To continue on with initiatives, uh, non-motorized transit, uh, the Northland redevelopment implementation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Uh, if you recall, the, the planning commission did, uh, adopt last week, or at least favorable recommendation to the council to adopt the master plan. Uh, that will actually be going to council tomorrow night, uh, hopefully for adoption. Uh, redevelopment-ready certification, sustainable plan development, sustainable Southfield master plan. Uh, so we are in the throes of, uh, the master plan, uh, the five-year plan, uh, which we hope to bring, uh, to you shortly. Uh, zoning ordinance technical review, uh, zoning ordinance amendments as required per all the above items. Uh, planning commission training. Um, we had training on electrical vehicles and city streets, uh, planning down under 2020 lockdown, public spaces and shared streets.
Jeff, can you go ahead next slide?
Oops, I'm sorry. Crowdsourcing tools, trail-oriented development, historic preservation to maintain neighborhood diversity, uh, federal infrastructure legislation, uh, virtual open meetings act training. Total, um, there were 31 webinars and, and meetings that were attended. From the standpoint of virtual meetings in 2021, five rezonings were processed, nine special land use cases, 11 site plans, four overlay development districts, and one R U D D. Um, in the, the document itself that was provided to you with the color coding on it, um, per Dr. Stevens-Gun request, uh, we did put a status of, of each one of those particular developments. Not surprising, actually, that most of them are either, um, still under review, or maybe just barely under construction, and none have opened up yet. With regard, with regard to value of development, uh, overall proposed development, uh, value costs, 174 million, 128, I'm sorry, 100,000 million, yes, 174 million, 128,000, 504 dollars. Um, in comparison to, to 2020, uh, actually, the Northland development by Contour actually kind of weighted a lot of the development, uh, cost, um, for, for 2020. So this is, this is a reduction, actually, in the development. But still, a, a good number of people are looking to, to develop here in Southfield. From the standpoint of projects that we've, that we worked on, um, Bell's Event Studio, New Soul Market, and actually, if you go down Northwestern Highway, you will see that for the most part, there's at least a skeleton of, of the, of the market that has been constructed to date. Chick-fil-A, Walgreens over on 12 Mile Road near Greenfield, Arbor Lofts with their amendment to their ODD agreement, McKinley School Red, uh, Residential Unit Development District for their R U D D, the Athletic Dome over on 9 Mile on Southfield, Verizon Wireless with the, the tear down of a portion of the existing building, and then a construction of brand-new offices, and then space for new electrical equipment and computer. Enterprise Rent-A-Car on Garner and Telegraph, the Alcove, uh, which is the Hawthorne Suites site. If you've been by there recently, uh, there has been a considerable amount of activity on that particular site, at least with regard to demoing the interior of the buildings. Uh, so a lot of the existing furniture, be it beds, uh, have all been removed from the way it looks, uh, from the interior of those buildings as they start to then renovate the inside. Middle Point ODD for the property directly across the street, Southfield Storage Facility, the Westline duplexes, and then the Miller Park renovations, as well as the Sim Park renovations. So those are the, uh, items in at least the planning department's report, uh, with regard to the planning commission activities for 2021. Uh, we would ask that you?
Mr. Spence, before, before we finalize this item, we are proposing to make the presentation, I believe, at the February 14th council, and it would be helpful if at least one commissioner was there to represent you, uh, as part of the presentation. I think in the past, we've had the chair, if he's available, or she, uh, make some introductory comments, and then we'll do the presentation. Um, I, I do want to limit the amount of people here, um, for in-person. If the chair is not available, then, um, maybe one of the other commissioners can step in to represent the entire?
I'll go anyway.
Commission, so we'll, we'll coordinate that with you, but, um...
That's, that's an ask that I wanted to make sure brought up. Sorry, Mr. Spence. I know you were going to adopt.
Yeah, again, so if I may through the chair, um, we would need a recommendation, a motion, uh, and a recommendation, ultimately, uh, a vote on the approval of the annual report for 2021.
To the chair?
Commissioner Martin?
I'd like to make a recommendation for the, uh, report, and that is to add, uh, summary page where we show just the, uh, the dollar amounts, so we can come, just to make it easier to review. Having the individual items in there and showing their dollar amounts is one thing, but having the summary list so that someone can see everything lined up and that is total amount, that's, that's all. And possibly showing the change from 2019, I'm sorry, 2020 to 2021. There's 50% increase, you know, from, I just think it would be something beneficial to the report, that's all.
If I may through the chair, I guess I'm not quite understanding what you're looking for.
Just?
I think in the presentation, Jeff, he just wants a summary of these dollar values.
Dollar amounts, yeah.
It's on, it's on the report, but it's not summarized up there. It's just a grand total.
Just like an addendum to the report, showing?
I can work with you on that. I, I think I understand what he's, he's asking for. So we have a motion. Let's get a second, and then you can have further discussion.
So just to clarify, is that a favorable motion with a?
A favorable motion with the, with the addendum to the report, yes.
My second.
All right. So we have a favorable motion by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Stevens-Gun. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Passes. Um, next is the?
To the chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to comment on the, uh, report. Uh, Jeff, I think it, it was excellent. I think the pending, the statuses are excellent. It helps, it helps us know that the work that we do here and, and the, the background that we do here, people are actually moving forward with their projects. So although their, their, their progress may, it will be small because there's a whole series of things that have to happen, it's just good to see that they're moving forward. So thank you very much for going that extra step.
All right. Uh, next, we have the election of officers.
Yes. So if I may through the chair to the planning commissioners, especially Dr. Stevens-Gun, who is, has not been through an election before, um, excuse me, uh, in general, the way that is, is taking place in the past, uh, is that nominations are made for each one of the, the various positions, for chair, for vice chair, and for secretary. So we would start with the chair, we would have nominations, um, and that would be the, the commissioners actually nominating a particular person for the position. Um, obviously, if, if we have more than one, um, that's fine. Um, we would then just take a vote on each one individually, and then the majority then would become the chair. We do the same thing with the vice chair, and the same with the secretary. Uh, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, we would be looking at election of the chair, um, for this coming year, and again, you'd open up the floor to nominations.
And again, I'm, I'm termed out, I guess, this is for?
Yes, yeah, if I may through the chair, yes, you are.
So I'm not an option anymore. Um, looking for a nomination?
What are the terms of each office?
What are the what?
The terms of each office. The chair can serve, what are the terms?
They're basically for a year.
It's, it's one year at a time, maximum of two consecutive years, I think, is what we've revised to at the latest.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so looking for nominations for a chair?
I'd like to make a nomination, Commissioner Culpepper for?
Commissioner Culpepper for chairman.
To the chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Huntington, thank you very much, but I respectfully decline that position. Thank you.
Okay. Nobody else? I'm gonna, I'll nominate Dr. Stevens-Gunn for position of chair.
Support.
How do we have, yeah, do we need a second or do you just have to, you have to...
If I may through the chair, right now, all we're doing is taking nominations. So Dr. Stevens-Gunn's name has been entered as a chair. So if someone else wants to make another nomination, they can do that at this time.
I haven't been here that long.
You can...
Baptism by fire.
You can decline, you can...
And we will help you through this, as you know.
Okay.
We got your back.
Okay.
And...
So if there's no other nomination...
Not everyone's here tonight, so I'm, I don't know. I don't even, I wish I wouldn't even said anything. I don't know why am I nominated?
You can close the nominations if there's no other nominations.
Okay. Okay, no other nominations for chair? Then it's time to vote for chair? Do we have to do roll call or just...
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
One by acclamation.
Well, Dr. Stevens-Gunn is nominated for chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here's where I step down.
Yep.
Today's the day.
You're gonna take over. You only got...
Unless we don't want to formally do the...
You could do the, you could do the passing of the gavel.
You are now baptized.
This is the easiest thing you're gonna need to do. So Madam Chair, you will now take nominations for vice chair.
Okay. Okay, are there any nominations for vice chair of the planning commission, city of Southfield?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Culpepper.
I respectfully decline.
Nope, I decline the chair, now I'm gonna decline the vice chair.
To the chair? I recommend Mr. Martin. Time to step up to the plate.
Yes, I understand.
Mr. Martin, do you accept the nomination?
I accept, yeah, I accept the nomination.
Are there any other nominations for the vice chair of the planning commission, city of Southfield? Are you all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Martin, you are now the vice chair of the planning commission, city of Southfield.
Thank you very much.
Are there any nominations for the secretary of planning commission, city of Southfield?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Willis.
Commissioner Willis isn't here.
He's not here tonight, but you can still nominate him.
Okay.
Commissioner Willis, as you know, has some health problems and he has concerns about attending meetings. He says if the COVID thing is changing the way he believes it is, that he won't have a problem accepting the position, but he just wants the commission to know that there's a possibility that he would be a while before he could attend meetings because...
Again, if you not nominate him and he declines, then we can talk about it again. He did reach out to us today, and he's hopeful that if things are better in a couple of weeks, he'll be joining us again in February.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the secretary, the planning commission of city of Southfield? Given none, all in favor of Mr. Willis as the secretary of the city of Southfield? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Willis is now the secretary of the planning commission, city of Southfield.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Then, as has been noted, Dr. Stevens-Gunn, chair of the planning commission, Mr. Martin, vice chair, and then Mr. Willis, secretary. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, it looks like our next, we have a miscellaneous item. Our next planning commission study meeting is February the 9th, 2022.
Yes, that's correct. We do have, I believe we have two or three items for your February agenda. One of them would not be available on the February 2nd date. So what we will do is we'll cancel your February 2nd study meeting, making your first study meeting in February the 9th.
Okay, given that change, are there any other comments for the good of the order? Given none, meeting adjourned.